Welcome everybody to the Russell Springs City Council Meet May 11th, 2023. Brother Larry Huckerby from Pickett's Chapel will be the leadest in front tonight. Thanks Larry for coming, appreciate you taking your time and then would you remain standing? And Mr. David Blakey will lead us in the pledge of allegiance if you don't care to stand with us.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for the many blessings of life, Lord, the blessings that we take for granted. For God, we thank you for godly leadership that's represented here tonight for our city, for our county, and for the people of Russell Springs. For God, I pray above all things tonight that we represent you in a mighty way, Lord, that we represent you properly, that we make decisions based on your will and your purpose and not our own. But God, I pray that you go with us, each and every one of us tonight, or protect us, keep us safe, bring us into our houses of worship safely again on Sunday. For God, we give you the praise, the honor, and the glory for all things. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Everybody ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Larry.
Yes, sir.
Called the meeting dawned the first thing. Chris, have you got a call?
The other girl called Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Peter Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Ms. Mann. Ms. Daniel.
Here.
Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Mary Huckerby.
Alrighty, the first thing before we get into acceptance of the minutes, I have a statement that was brought by here and dropped off to us this week and from Valerie Baker's parents. And Chris, would you read that?
This message came from Dylan, Julie, and David Baker. We'd like to thank everyone for the support and love that was extended to us during the loss of our precious daughter Valerie Baker. Never in our lifetime did we have imagined what it would feel like to have people that we hardly knew show the care and support that this county showed us. All the emergency services personnel, every department, you went above and beyond what we could ever have expected. Valerie obviously touched lives that we had no idea that she touched. Words can never express our gratitude for all everyone did for us. Thank you and we are very forever grateful for the prayers, food, cars, and kindness. May God bless each of you in a special way. And then it was signed by all of them.
Thank you, Chris. That was just, they dropped it off this week and she told me, she said that she wanted to thank the department, the police department, and everybody in the city. She couldn't individually thank everybody, so she just wanted to send a letter out. So keep them in your prayers. She couldn't even hardly talk to me without praying, so they need our prayers. First thing, the acceptance of the minutes, Chris has sent them out to you and you've received them. I hope you've had time to look at them. Are there any additions or detractions of the minutes? Need a motion to?
I have the motion.
Got a motion by Ricky. Need a second?
I said a second, yeah.
Second for David. Chris, roll the call.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alrighty, thank you, council. The next thing is the acceptance of the cash disbursements of the financial statements. Chris has sent you a list of it to play, pay the bills. I hope you've looked over that. Are there any discussions on them? Any questions about any of the bills? No, I need a motion to pay the bills.
I know that we pay the bills.
Motion for sure. You need a second?
Second.
Second for Timmy. Chris, need a roll call, please.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alrighty, council, the next thing is our business. Anybody got anything for our business? Thing that we'll bring up that we need to discuss? If not, we'll go directly into new business. First thing is Larry Lee. Up here, sir.
I want to let Mr. Alex say it, sir.
Both of them come on that. We'll put you right in the corners here, you're on the other side. This is just a donation to the, to the car class, for the skills, for these guys. They done picnic tables for us for the park and built well. And we appreciate you guys more than you know. We just want to give you a little donation to show your appreciation. So look right there at that guy and smile real big. That guy stood up, you could look at him, you'd smile anyway, but just look at him. But thank you all. Hey, we appreciate it. We really appreciate you guys. The next thing is Resolution 202306. It's a resolution approving a grant assistance agreement, HP1 2022. And Chris, we'll read that summary portion.
This is where we've been doing the Mount Eden Project and the Commonwealth of Kentucky said they may have some additional funding. They have not told us what it will be yet, but they're waiting for some of the monies to go back into the state from some other projects. And in order to accept any additional funding, we had to pass this resolution tonight. And I've passed everybody and got a resolution on the copy there. It's just, it says, "Resolution of the City of Russell Springs, accepting the grant, approving the grant assistance agreement, authorizing amendment of the City of Russell Springs' annual budget and authorizing a representative to sign all related documents." It says, "Whereas Kentucky General Assembly has appropriated funds for the infrastructure projects and House Bill 1 of the 2022 Regular Session of Kentucky General Assembly and the Clean Water Program." It says, "Whereas the City of Russell Springs as the grantee has previously determined that it is in the public interest to acquire and construct certain facilities and improvements to the grantee's utility system," quote the project, "whereas the grantee desires funding for the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority and for the purposes of acquisition and construction of the project. Whereas in order to obtain a grant for the Clean Water Program for the project administered by the authority, the grantee is required to enter into an assistance agreement with the authority. Now therefore, it be resolved by the governing body of the City of Russell Springs as follows: One, the grantee hereby accepts the grant or improves the agreement between the grantee and the authority to provide the necessary funds to the grantee for the project. Section two, that's, I guess the City of Russell Springs hereby designated to be, or that Mayor Thomas is hereby designated to be the grantee's authorized official for this project and is hereby directed and empowered by the grantee to execute the agreement, related documents, agreements, and to otherwise act on behalf of the grantee to effect such grant award and to engage a qualified project administrator. Section three, the grantee hereby agrees and commits to include by the amendment to establish an economic audit process, the receipts and expenditures of the funds settled in agreement, up to and including the project closeout." And it says that this resolution shall take effect at the earliest provided adoption of the resolution. And it says adopted by the day City of Russell Springs in place for Mayor Thomas to sign. And then has a place for me to certify that the mayor has signed and that we've met all KRSs 61-810, 61-815, 61-820, and 61-823 of the Kentucky Revised Statutes.
Alright, you get a copy of it too, council. I need a motion.
Need to fix the typographical error.
That's from the state.
They need to fix it.
Yes.
That bothers me.
Word.
Assistance is spelled wrong.
Oh.
One, two, three, four, one. Other than that, I'm okay with it.
I need a motion.
Make a motion with acceptance.
A motion for David, need a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Chris. The next thing is the first reading of ordinance 202303, an ordinance relating to the yard sale and flea markets that's sponsored by Councilwoman Daniels. And there'll be no vote on that tonight, and Chris is just going to read the summary of it tonight. So, Chris, have at it.
Ordinance 2023-03, an ordinance regulating yard sales and flea markets to the City of Russell Springs. Whereas the City of Russell Springs has experienced an increase in yard sales and flea markets, and whereas it is necessary to establish regulations to ensure that the yard sales and flea markets are conducted in some manner that is safe, orderly, and consistent with the community's character. And whereas the ordinance is enacted in accordance with the authority vested in the City of Russell Springs by the Kentucky Revised Statutes. Now therefore, it be ordained by the City Council of the City of Russell Springs, Kentucky. Section 1, purpose, the purpose of this article is to find and differentiate between normal home and neighborhood yard sales and flea markets. In addition to set standards, frequency, and location of activity within the jurisdiction of the city. The regulations found within this section do not report to regulate yard sales or activities already regulated by other state or county laws or regulations. Section 2, definitions. For the purposes of this article, the following definition shall apply unless the context clearly indicates or requires a different meaning. A, flea market. An open air market for the sale of new and or secondhand articles and goods by one or more merchants, which is conducted on an open non-residential lot. B, yard sale, garage sale, attic sale, rummy sale. An occasional sale conducted by a household or group of households or by a nonprofit group, organization, on its own premises, or at which surplus and primarily used household goods and/or clothing are sold. Yard sales are conducted by a household or group of households shall be those conducted on residential premises of one or more of those households. Section C, Highway 127 yard sale. An annual week-long event that takes place every August and draws hundreds of thousands of shoppers and vendors. The 690-mile route passes through six states, including Michigan, Ohio, Kentucky, Tennessee, Georgia, and Alabama. Section 3, standard for the yard sales. A, yard sales shall be permitted use in zoning districts defined as residential by the city's zoning ordinance, so long as they are conducted on attractive land that has an occupied dwelling. B, each yard sale shall be limited to the daylight hours of three consecutive days. C, yard sales shall be limited to a maximum of two per calendar year per property. D, the yard sale operator shall provide parking for his or her yard sale, so as not to impede the normal flow of traffic of the roadways in the area around the yard sale. E, yard sales shall not include items purchased elsewhere expressly for resale. F, goods intended for sale shall be stored, displayed in the front or side yards of dwelling, except on the days of sale. G, commercial outdoor sales activities are prohibited at yard sales. H, yard sales are allowed on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Section 4, standard for flea markets. Flea markets are only allowed in non-residential zoning districts or as conditional uses in the commercial C1 districts, as defined by the city zoning ordinance. B, the flea market must provide off-street parking at a ratio of two spaces per vendor table, exhibit, display, or area. Parking is not permitted on the roadway or on the off-site. C, flea market operators must obtain the necessary business license and permits within the city zoning business license offices. D, flea markets operators must maintain sanitary conditions at all times. They must provide permanent restrooms or quartersons, along with access to running water. Any food vendors must obtain the appropriate health permits from the Russell County Health Department. E, flea market operators must keep a current list of vendors for any space in the flea market area, including the name, address, phone number, food location, and type of products they are selling. This list must be kept for one year and made available for inspection by the city clerk, code enforcement officer, and law enforcement agencies during hours of operation. Flea markets are allowed on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. G, flea markets must operate only during daylight hours. H, flea markets must comply with all state and local laws, regulations, including those set forth by the health department. Section 5, standard for Highway 127 yard sale. A, the Russell Springs City, the Russell Springs City ordinance regarding flea market and yard sales is not applied to the Highway 127 yard sale, which is allowed to take place in the first few weeks of August. Section 6, penalties enforcement. Any violation of this ordinance is misdemeanor, punishable by fine of $500 per day. Any act of violation of this ordinance or fails to comply with its requirements may also subject the offender to a civil penalty as authorized per ordinance. B, the city has the right to immediately enjoin any flea market or yard sale operating in violation of this ordinance and then pass this date, signed by Mayor Thomas, test Chris Corrine, the city clerk. And that is your first reading, with no votes.
Alright, that's the first reading of it. We'll have the second reading at the next meeting. Has the council got anything?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay. What about, we're running the flea market in town. New building, everything's indoor. But our days are Friday, Saturday, and Sundays. So, does that mean we're going to have to change everything, our advertisement, what we're doing?
That, that will have to go through the council. And Tommy is not here. He's our code enforcement.
I mean, we've been doing it almost a year, over. I mean, we provide parking for our customers, vendors, everything.
Have you got a business license in the city limits?
Does he got one? Brad got one.
It's Brad Barnes.
Brad Barnes, got it.
Well, if you've got a flea market that's your business, you've got to have a business license.
Well, if, you said you got one, though.
Yeah, we got, I got a booth there. Brad Barnes got the flea market.
He owns the building.
He owns the building.
He owns the building, and you all are vendors in this building, correct?
So you're not the owner of the flea market.
No.
You're just a vendor.
Well, I mean, I own a business here in county, and we're looking at adding a business to the city limits also.
Well, I mean, we're just talking about this one you've got right now, at this time. You don't own that business.
No, we don't own it.
Are there several vendors in there?
There's several vendors in there.
And you, you've always been open Friday, Saturday?
Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, since day one. But I mean, we've got a large parking lot and everything over there.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
This is the first reading?
This is just the first reading. To me, and I don't know this, and I think we need to talk to Tommy about it, but the, the idea of it is to limit it to three days, I think. Does it matter what three days they are? That's just a question.
That's up to you.
Well, I mean, I'm just asking. I don't know.
One way's got this row, it does, right now.
Yeah, but I'm saying, that's not set in stone. This is just the first reading.
Correct. First readings are just first readings.
Don't even vote.
And the council can make any changes.
Something we've got on there now.
I mean, we're, we're doing ours according to all the other, the bigger flea markets.
Like in Somerset.
Like in Somerset.
They're open on Sunday, yeah.
What's the difference in a yard sale and a flea market?
Yard sale's at your house. That's where you sell your personal treasures. In a, in a, am I right? It's a home.
Not a business.
So with a yard sale, you couldn't have stuff, you just reselling it. Or, that was for all of it, wasn't it?
At a yard.
That was for yard sale.
That was for a yard sale. A flea market's more like a, a store.
Well, they call it Place of Verbumia, a flea market. It, I, it looks more like a yard sale to me, I don't know. We'll have to figure all this out for next.
But you're enclosed in a building.
Right. I mean, I have, I have a business license there.
Yeah, I understand. It's in a building, which makes.
The way it's written now says in an open air flea market.
Yeah, we're talking about.
I mean, I just.
You've got more like a peddler's mall, or a, am I right?
Well, not necessarily. Peddler's mall, you rent a spot, and then you don't have to be there. Well, we do, the vendors has to be there.
You have the same vendors all the time, or?
Same, pretty much. We're adding vendors. But it'd be inside, it's all inside.
Would that be considered a thing, I could think?
And I mean, we're drawing customers out. I know right now, we got customers coming out of seven different counties coming here.
I mean, is that a flea market, or is that considered a business?
Well.
It's a question for Tommy, maybe?
That's a question, Tommy. But my question is, and this is what I get back to when I ask you, if you're subleasing the building.
I'm leasing the, the building.
You, as far as.
I'm renting, renting the booths and part of the booths.
Right, so as a subleasing, you would have to have a business license.
So everybody in there had to give a business license?
No, no. You're, you're subleasing it off of somebody.
Well, Brad owns it, and everybody in there pays Brad renting on it.
So you're just one of the vendors in there.
I'm one of the vendors.
You're not considered. Well, Brad needs to be up here asking these questions, be the owner of the building, because the owner.
But there would just be one business license.
Right.
Am I right on that?
Right.
To encompass that entire building.
Yeah, but it would have to be sharing for the flea market.
Right.
It just can't be for the building.
Well, I mean, for the business that's located in the building.
Where's, where's your building at?
Right behind Hoppskip, right outside of Hoppskip, yeah, four out.
I've been corrected by council, and I apologize. He said each vendor in there would have to have a business license.
The owner of the building is not conducting any business. All he's doing is listening and receiving.
None of the other, okay, why is it none of the other, none of the other flea markets in the state does that?
I don't know. We'd have to ask him. It'd just be something that would be unique.
I mean, myself, I own, I have a business resale license.
That's for sales.
Right. And everything, so I mean, we.
That's not the city business license.
So each in the, so each in the business, when everybody wants to buy a city business license.
But now, yet, if you're going to get tech with this, Jeremy?
Yes, sir.
Which, they would just be part-time, so would they get a?
I mean, how'd that work? I mean, we're not running a full-time business.
The business licenses are prorated. The city has an ordinance that says if you conduct business within the city boundaries for profit, that you are required to have a business license. It goes from different size for employees, from 500 up to 500 down, and it's prorated by increment. So anyone that conducts business in the city for profit is required to obtain a business license, whether you mow yards or.
Well, I know that, because I own, I own a bit, couple businesses in county, and then I pay a, a pretty good optification tax to them every year.
Yes, sir. We all do.
You taking notes of how it works? Because we will have to address that moving forward. So council, reflect what, what we want to do here moving forward.
I think we should have some.
No accident.
We don't have to do anything.
No, we'll have to amend the ordinance. If you want to amend the ordinance, you're going to leave it like it is, whatever, but.
I, I probably have no more than, if it's going to be three days a week, I'd let them decide what.
What three days they are, I kind of don't.
This is, this is inside, so it ain't like having a yard sale on the outside.
No, it's not like what this ordinance draws up.
So that's going to be different from having it out here.
No, this isn't about an indoor business.
But I think, I think we've been made aware of something, because it's just like, just like the people selling flyers up on 127, they have to pay a permit to sell them flyers. Correct, Jeremy?
Yes, sir.
I thought, I thought you went out and.
Yes.
I've seen you do that before. So I think, now that we're aware of that, the people that's doing flea markets, even on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, they want to have a permit. I mean, that's just, they got to have a permit, that's what the ordinance says. Correct, Chris?
But what makes it a yard sale is, is, is if it's at your home, or on a piece of property that has an occupied dwelling on it.
And you have two a year.
And you have two a year.
You don't have one every month, every week.
So if, if you just set up every weekend with a yard sale, Lord, I'd have to think what my house would look like if I had enough stuff to have one once a week, but, you know, then that's considered a business. Am I right?
What's your question?
If, if you, if you have a yard sale every week.
Then it's not a yard sale.
It's not a yard sale. It becomes a flea market, is that right?
It becomes some other kind of business, but not a flea market. But it's not a yard sale, if you do it consistently.
Basically clear you're basically in our attic, I want you to go.
If I might make a suggestion.
You're not buying.
I think we should, I think we should table this, get together and talk it all out, and then.
Well, we got to, anyway. We can't take away.
I know, but I think we need to get together, because everybody's.
So what's the license going to cost?
No two people's experience, anything. A business license can be as low as $50. And it's an annual, it's an annual expense.
So a person's going to be only in there a month, so they've got to buy a license for what, a whole year or a month, or?
I don't know how the rate breaks down, sir. I don't want to mislead you.
I mean, I'm just.
I just can't remember off the top of my head exactly how the business.
I'm just trying to figure, you know.
Yeah.
I pay a hundred a month for mine, of course, a year might be. But I'm just saying, you know, if you go in, you rent a booth for a whole month, and you decide you don't want to do it, then you've got a license for a whole year, or, I know, we do, I know, we do shows and some festivals areas. And like we go to Tennessee, we buy a permit for that weekend that we're there. And I mean, you know, some different places, they'll, they say you have to permit for, if it's, you know, for a weekend. I didn't know if it would be something like that, or if it's going to be where.
Like I said, I can't remember how that thing got raised.
What does a permit cost for a weekend?
Well, I know when we do the rod run, digging forwards, we pay this, we have, the city is severable, we give them, we have to pay them $25 for a four-day permit, and then we have to turn in sales tax to the state of Tennessee. And it's like I do the Kianna Show with Louisville. There, we don't have to buy a permit, they're fairgrounds, but we, we have to collect sales tax on everything, and turn it in.
I think that's something that we will discuss, David. Like you said, I think Jeremy ain't a permit, $50 for a, I think.
Business license?
Yeah, business license.
I think it'd be as low as $50.
Yeah, I think that's a part of that.
I don't know, I don't remember how it breaks out.
So I mean, I'm, I'm thinking you're probably looking at maybe $50, and that's something that we can look at moving forward. I know it's, if you, if like the florist, people selling flowers up here, the cell phone guys, they're $50.
I think it's $50, yes.
So it's something, if you're going to be open Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, or Friday, Saturday, or whatever, you're not full-time. So it'd be sometime that we could look at doing something like maybe $50 or something like that a year. And then if they just go in here, and they, I mean, a month, and they don't like it, then oh, that's, sorry about the luck, they didn't do too good.
I mean, I'm just curious.
Yeah. Well, I mean, hey, you've done good. You've given us something to talk about, and something to think about moving forward too, you know. The reason I think we went with Thursday, Friday, and Saturday is because the 127 yard sale is not on Sunday. So I think that's kind of what we was looking at. Some of them still stay set up on Sunday, but I think it's advertised, you know, just from Saturday. That's, that, thank you. Thank you, you gave us something to, to hash out here. Is that okay?
Yeah.
You okay?
I am, I mean.
Alright.
I'm just looking at a business.
Right, right, okay. Tim, Bob, you got me in. This is your final and last police report.
I do, Mayor. I've had two drug DUI arrests, two alcohol intoxication arrests, two public intoxication arrests, 15 warrants served, eight man traffic stops, 53 people were cited, four speeding tickets, 20 traffic accidents, 27 motor失, 14 alarms, two cases opened, and 38 ABCs stations.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody got any questions? Do you hear?
Been good to have him, as long as we hail, anyway.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Well, the mayor's report, the first thing is, I hope the council's seen the old city aisle, fire department. We have demolished it, it's gone, and we'll look at starting phase three probably in a year, probably a couple of years before we'll do anything with that. But it's, it looks good over there. It's open, it's clear. We've got. But it's, it looks good over there. It's open. It's clear. We've got just a little bit of work here. The gas company cannot get the gas turned off at the road for a day or two, so they'll be through posts sitting up there. But we'll have them down probably by the end of next week. And the next thing is a pool repair update. Joseph Smith Hays Memorial Pool. We usually open in Memorial Day weekend, and I hope, and our goal is to open it Memorial Day weekend. But we've had an awful time and I just asked everybody to be patient with us. We're going to try to meet that goal like we always do, but we've had some problems. We've got some cracks. We're trying to get a company to sandblaste it. They come over, they've started. The compressor caught on fire. It's just been one thing. They run out of sand. We had to send people. Thanks, Jeremy, for all the work. It's just been, it's just been, but, but they think they'll have it done next week. So then we'll have to paint it. We've got to paint that house. It's kind of been a, been a, been a crazy two weeks trying to get it open. And the next thing is the Animal Welfare League Open House is Sunday, May twenty-first, from two to four at the new DAV building, the old up on. So may have the old. Yeah, Old Town.
The old DFW is now the new DAV?
Yeah, Sheri, and they're having a, they're ha, and if you'd have went and had opened house and invited everybody two weeks ago, man, you ought to see it.
I wasn't invited.
Yeah.
Well, I must have missed it then. Thought it was leaving me out again.
But if you get a chance, this is just for neutered pets, and they're trying to help the elder with their cats and their dogs. And here's a flyer on it. Anybody want to, wants to go?
Is it?
Two to four, the twenty-first. And it's, everybody's welcome, two to four.
Thank you.
So I'm inviting you, because they invited us, so if, if everybody hears that. So with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion with adjourn.
By Timmy, second.
Second.
Second by Sheri, or adjourned.